Counselor Phil.
Well, Counselor Loebi.
Thank you, Mr. Vice. Good evening, Attorney Hazel, Mr. Weeks. Mr. Weeks, earlier you described how the events transpired. Could you just go back over where you were shown the letter and asked about the campaign letter before you went to the office, to the city council office? Could you describe again about the letter? I was unclear what you had described about the letter.
When I was showed the letter by the mayor, she asked the question, "Does anything look unusual on the letter?" I looked at the letter and noticed that all three signatures appeared to be done by the same person. That was basically it.
What does that mean? What's your conclusion?
Well, I didn't really draw any conclusion. The mayor had asked me a question if I thought anything looked unusual, and I said, "Yeah, the three signatures appear to be the same." But I said before, I'm not a handwriting analyst, so I don't know that they were done by the same person, but the mayor believed that they were, and she wanted to be investigated further.
I'm not asking you to speak for the mayor or think for the mayor, although you did say before you went up to the office, you went and told Karen what our thinking was. That was what you said earlier.
Okay, you know...
Did you? Is that correct?
Our thinking in regards to...
You said earlier that before we went up to the office, we went and told Karen, Peter Karen, what our thinking was.
Well, it's really more of what the mayor's thinking was, and I, you know, in looking at the letter, agreed that it looked like something, you know, didn't look correct if it got all three signatures.
I'm sorry, Mr. Weeks. I don't know, and I'm trying to understand what you were thinking and what you were, what was leading you to the events that occurred.
What was it? Was it the mayor wanted to check the computer?
I understand that, but you described that you would show this letter, and what you're testifying is that the signature on the letter appeared to be the same, which, I don't know, if I sign something, I'm hoping my signature is always the same.
There were three names on the letter, and all three signatures appeared to be the same.
Oh, I see, so that three different persons with the same signature.
Three different people, same signature.
And so that, what does that mean?
I don't know what that means, but it just didn't look like those were three, you know, three people, three signatures, and not only by three different people, and not either the same, so it looked unusual to me.
Unusual in that the, if they...
If you and Counselor Vann and Counselor Phelan all had three names on the letter, and every signature looked to be just about written the same way, it would look unusual, wouldn't it?
I'll agree with you, but do you think it's unusual to immediately think that it was the city council's computer?
I think he's already testified to that. Ad nauseam, I believe that you have a report from Attorney Grunenbaum that he didn't think much of anything at all, that he thought the signatures were the same, and that's what he's testified to tonight. It was the mayor who went through this process and told him what she thought and what to do, so you can ask him those.
I would like to, Mr. Hazel, if you don't mind. Mr. Weeks, you mentioned that we've gone over it as, Mr. Hazel, Attorney Hazel once ad nauseam. It was unusual, there appeared to be a signature, but what, is it possible, Mr. Weeks, that it could have been done on a computer at his home, or could have been on a computer? Please, Attorney Hazel, this is just a real simple question. I think we're trying to get some honest transparency from Mr. Weeks, who you said has voluntarily given before us, and I'm not asking a very complicated question. I'm just asking a simple question. Is it possible that the unusual signature could have been done on any computer? And if you could answer that, Mr. Weeks, very simply, yes or no?
Was it, is it possible now, is it possible before, was it possible at the time?
Thank you for that. You can add all those two, Attorney Hazel. Mr. Weeks, could you answer that question very simply?
Which one do you want? Was it possible at the time?
The simple question, is it possible it could have been done on any computer?
The letter itself could have been created anywhere.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Now, because it could have been done on any computer, I'm confused.
Because...
Well, I haven't asked the question yet, Mr. Weeks. So you're telling me that that unusual signature could have been done on any computer?
The signature was handwritten, it wasn't a computer signature. It looked like it had been written with a pen or a monitor or something.
And it was electronically stored on a computer, is that possible?
No, it looks like it had been copied. You know, the letter, the letter was printed out. Somebody signed the three names, and maybe it's copied. I don't know that.
You don't know? So I'm confused then. You came to a conclusion that evening that there was... The mayor and you came up with the same conclusion, that something looked unusual. You had described that you and the ma, or the mayor had gone to the district attorney's office, and that there was proof, because she had a suspicion, and she must have revealed that to you. Is that correct, Mr. Weeks?
Yes.
Okay. And the suspicion she had was that she thought that the signatures were produced on the city council computer, is that correct?
Yeah. No, the signatures she thought were produced by Ms. Young, because she said that she recognized her signature. Once again, not her handwriting, I have no idea.
Did you ask if the mayor was a handwriting expert? I don't know. So at that point, the mayor just instructed you to follow her? And could you take us through at that point?
I think I've done that previously, but yeah, she, at that point, wanted to go talk to Mr. Cameron. Got to his office, we went, and she told him she was going to take a look at the computer.
What did Mr. Cameron say?
He wasn't, you know, he kind of understood where she was coming from at St. Life, and he was not opposed to it. He didn't say, you know, he didn't say really much of anything.
You, Mr. Weeks, you said earlier that you wrote the internet policy for city employees?
I put the policy together, and though the law of competition made a few changes and approved it.
Okay. And I read it just once, and earlier you said you don't know if notice is to be given to the employee if the...
I don't know that it's...
That's in the policy?
I don't know that policy inside. No, that was four years ago. I don't know that policy.
You wrote the policy, and you don't know if that provision is in the policy?
I don't believe it is, but I am not positive.
Well, I read the policy, it is in there, and the employee is to be given notice prior to that computer being taken, and last, that employee is on vacation. And I find that just a, I believe that you can't remember that. Moving on, Mr. Weeks...
If I recall the policy, I think it says it's impractical, and I think the example was if the employee was on vacation, but as you've heard, the testimony, Attorney Grunenbaum report to city hall employees who were assigned to that office who were not there, how, just when he walked in.
Thank you, Mr. Hazel, Attorney Hazel. Mr. Weeks... You mentioned that after you took the computer, you took it to your office, and you started it up, and you looked at files. Was the computer password protected?
Yes, the computer was password protected, but I logged on, I have limited administrative rights on the network.
I'm confused. You're a consultant, you're not an actual employee of the city.
That seems to be the question, what I guess. I am, correct.
You're a consultant, and yet you have creative rights with access to city employee passwords.
No, that's not what I said. An administrative password is a separate password. I do not have access to other people's passwords.
And that password, that administrative ability allows you to go in and bypass that employee's password?
It gives you limited rights to look at that desktop computer.
Did those limited rights allow you to look at every file on Secretary Young's computer?
If those files were on the hard drive of that computer, then I would be able to see them. If they were in a protected folder under Ms. Young's password, I would not be able to see them.
You would have seen the protected files, though?
I would have seen that there were folders there.
Did you?
There did not appear to be really many folders on that machine. As I said previously, there were very few files on that machine.
Okay, so you didn't see any protected files on her computer?
No.
Okay. But so then you were able to thoroughly review and accomplish what you had set out to do?
Yes.
Earlier, you just, you mentioned, I thought you admitted that you had lied, and I guess you said it was a most plausible explanation that you could give, and I just think, you know, fancy words, but that wasn't the truth. I'll yield to Counselor Caluci to attend.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Wood. I just want to go back a couple more times. I believe after the election, after the advance, it was in the, I believe it was in the item about taking up the computer, and then I think maybe a week later, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Weeks, I think you sent us all a letter, just, you know, from yourself, saying that you would attend any, you know, I guess it was the next council that you wrote. Is that correct, am I...
As I recall, it was the council's voting on Tuesday that they would use the subpoena powers. On Friday, I wrote the letter, September 27th, and delivered it personally to everybody's house on Saturday. And I believe the subpoena was then issued a week or so later. There was no response from anybody, and I just said...
Okay, but you were like right after when I hit the paper, you were just coming in yourself and answering all our questions that we had.
I don't think that's what the letter says. The letter speaks for itself. The letter says that I am willing, more than willing, to appear to the council with reasonable notification that was never responded to, and instead he gave a subpoena that was improperly issued.
But you said originally he was...
Somebody had called and said, "Come on in, we want to discuss the computer." Like, "We're here tonight."
I understand, but he sent the letter originally saying that he was going to come in, he had no problem answering all the questions.
With reasonable, no, I don't think that's the letter. The letter speaks for itself. You all received it, you know what it said. I don't think you can put, you know, your own spin on it.
I'm just saying that he was coming in right after, he had nothing, nothing to hide. That's my point, I guess.
It's not what the letter says. I'm telling you again, the letter speaks for itself. You have the letter, he gave it to you. You can read it if you want to read the one that I have in front of me, you're welcome to do that, but I don't want you mischaracterizing the letter.
I'm not mischaracterizing the letter, I just, it just concerns me that now all of a sudden, Mr. Weeks, he was going to come in on his own, and now he has an attorney. So I guess that's my, I guess that's my biggest problem with all this. If he didn't feel as though he was doing nothing wrong, then why tonight does he stand here in front of us after not coming to a couple of meetings, and then we finally had to subpoena him? Does he come to the lawyer? I guess that's why, to me, that's just like with this smoke, this fire, I guess.
I think, you know, Mr. Caluci came closest to it, it was kind of tit for tat. If, you know, he said to you, "Give me some notice, I'll come in," you chose not to do that. You chose to put the subpoena out, okay, so, you know, you said, "Come in, notify me, tell me, come in, I'll come in." You didn't, and you withdrew the subpoena. Fortunately, this is where we are, but we are here voluntarily tonight, and we're trying to answer all the questions.
Yep, you're not answering all of them, you're only answering about the computer. We have other questions, you have to answer.
That's what the vote is.
That's my concern. Why, why is it that we're not answering these other questions?
Well, because...
You said he had nothing to hide.
Like, the last subpoena was admittedly wrong, this subpoena may be, may be wrong, and we reserve our rights with respect to that, but we may visit that before the night's over. I just would ask you to, let's clear up...
The night is getting a little late, I think we've asked a lot of questions about the computer. I don't know if anybody has too many more, I just...
You know, I'd like to bring more myself.
I'd just like to ask one more question, and you, I think it'd be, Mr. Weeks, about 25 years you've been in business doing this?
In the computer industry.
Have you ever in 25 years ever gone into someone's office without notification and just taken someone's computer?
I have not, but in the past, I had people who wanted to direct, if somebody needed, if we needed to look at a computer, for CDOs, I'd say, "Man, you need to look at someone's, I need you to look at someone's computer."
Now, have you taken anybody else's computer in City Hall without their knowledge?
No.
Like, when the City Hall was closed?
No.
In the last four years that you were taken?
Absolutely not.
No?
No.
Okay. And I think Counselor Seer, I forget, I'll tell you, Attorney Hazel, but tell me, did so when you touched Secretary Young's computer, you never touched it or had anything to it or did anything?
Absolutely not.
Okay, so for the record, everything stayed the same? You just filed through it, read anything?
No, I didn't read everything, but I just, where files that were there were stored to look by date, and any files that had been created recently, which there were, there were very few, you know, were open, looked at, and that was it. And the computer was brought back up, plugged back in, turned back on, logged in with a password, like everything, and the computer was fine.
And then, I don't know, I just keep going back, because I was just curious. I mean, I was just wondering how you attained the job, but I guess we can't, nobody wants to understand, was it a bid, or did you just get a call by the mayor, and he was hired? I just, I know I was curious, I know a few of my other colleagues had that same question. That's not something that, to me, it's a simple answer, how it's hired, but I guess not.
Are we through with the computer issue?
Uh, well, I don't know if anybody else had one.
Hey, Counselor Seer.
We wrote the letter that the father counsel was to get. Did you write this, Weeks?
The letter that was delivered to your house? Yes, it was, I wrote it.
Not any offer from anybody?
I wrote the letter myself.
Okay. And you've never gone into anybody else's office in City Hall, retrieved that computer, downloaded, checked any information?
Absolutely not.
You have the authority or the ability to look at people's medical records, personal information, social security numbers, or anything like that?
I object, that has no relevance to this.
It may, it may be information on that computer that is private, that pertains to the city council, if there's any medical information on any may violate HIPAA laws. And I think all of us are asking the same question, but your qualifications, how would, did you, were you the best campaign manager prior to being elected?
Before, I don't know what the question is, but Counselor Seer, if I recall, you were the one that said that everything on the computer was public information, all anybody had to do was come in and ask, they didn't have to, you know, in the dock and crawl on A and T knees and get the computer, so it's all...
Wait, I used to crawl on A and T knees, I used to...
I believe, I believe you did, Counselor Seer, that's a matter of record, and that's one of the reasons why I'm, that's... Can I finish? Can I finish?
One other time, Counselor Seer.
That's why we're here, we're here voluntarily, and that's why I'm here, just trying to keep this civil, okay, and keep it to the points. Now, you have an investigation that's been furnished to you, you're asking questions, but, you know, if everything was public, then this is irrelevant.
I believe it is relevant, and getting back to you saying that, I said that you was on A and T knees, did you go on A and T knees, get on the desk to retrieve that computer?
I squatted down.
Did you go on the computer on A and T knees? You squatted?
No, I squatted down and took the computer from under the desk and plugged it in. I didn't crawl on A and T knees.
Pretty unpleasant, you know?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Not too stealthy, it's too big to be stealthy.
Yep, well, just saying, I mean, you went in there, or did you call to anybody, a lot of them knows that you were in the office when there was, someone who thinks that was...
Another question, to say.
Did you open the gate?
Asked and answered. How many times are we going to have? No, okay, I'm just telling you, we're getting to the point where we're asking this witness, how many times do you want him to answer whether or not he opened the gate? He's told you several times. You know, and just let me say, and again, we're coming in here voluntarily, as I understand it, and I've asked several times, there's no written procedures for this type of hearing, okay, and I've asked that, and it says in here that you will make such written procedures. You know, we're given, you know, whether you believe so or not, Counselor Seer, we're giving you an extreme latitude by going back and forth, not having just one person answer questions, and having you ask questions and go to somebody else and go back to you, and then go to somebody else and go back to you. If we just can keep it civil, ask some direct questions, not make statements, we're happy to...
You made a statement to me, so I'm...
Okay, let's keep that on.
I think that's my job.
And it's my job to keep the law in the book.
Absolutely, yeah. Good question.
Will you follow the bidding process in my A and J job here at City Hall?
Again, we're sticking with the computer. Get through with the computer issue, I'd like to take a break, and then maybe we'll come back and deal with that.
Thank you. Hi, Kenny.
Counselor Fuller.
I feel like this is illegal. I feel, I think I feel different from the other councils. If anything else, I'm moral, and I like Kenny, not personally. Did you ever feel like when the mayor told you to do this, it was like, I don't think it's the right thing to do?
No.
In 25 years you've never done this, though, it almost seems like you were a member of the council.
That's not the testimony. His testimony was, in his 25 years, he was in a position that he instructed other people to do that. I mean, you know, it's not like it doesn't happen, it's a typical process.
I just found it strange when I read my package, I was almost like shocked. I know Kenny, it didn't make sense to me. And just so, like, I just have a final question. Chair, the line. Attorney Wood, there's nothing illegal with no one in the office for the mayor and Mr. Weeks to win and take that as a given. That's not illegal.
It could be a lot, but it was not taken a lawful, done, or whatnot, you know?
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Weeks? Counselor Seer.
Just, do you have a look at the mayor's computer, the signature on the mayor's computer?
I have no reason to look at the mayor's computer.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Counselor Phelan.
I do. I read the newspaper that the bidding process with you obtaining your position was three telephone bids because...
Counselor Phelan?
I need, why don't you wait, why don't you wait until my question is asked?
I need to know whether the computer issue has been exhausted before we go there, and I ask to reasonably take a break before we decide whether to go there, so...
Through the chair, I think this is part of the computer process, so if the chair will indulge me, if you could wait for my question before we object, that the, that telephone bids were obtained because the value of the contract was almost $25,000 for the general duties and responsibilities of the position. I'm going to ask you a question that, in my opinion, there would be no reason not to answer in front of the public, on TV, in front of the city council, and in front of the newspaper. Did you participate in the bidding process prior to the bids being selected?
And again, and again, I'm going to, back to that question, I'm going to ask that the computer issue, whether it's totally exhausted, if it is, I would ask to take a break, and then we'll come back and address that.
Okay, I'll, let me just, I'll...
I guess a simple, simple request.
Okay, Mr. Hazel, if I could, does anybody else on the council have a question concerning the computer? Counselor Seer.
May not concern the computer, but I'm just curious, so if we do take a break, are you going to come back and answer the questions?
You know, I'm going to take a break, confer with my client, which is typically what attorneys are allowed to do, and then we'll come back and address that second set of issues, one way or the other.
Okay, so you can say...
I told you from the outset, we reserve our rights.
Okay. Counselor Seer, Counselor...
I just, I just want to know whether the computer issue is exhausted before we do that.
Okay, anybody in the council, does anybody else have a question concerning the computer?
Mr. President, I don't think Attorney Hazel should be dictating to the council how we're going to operate here. If he wishes to have a break, I'm more than happy to accommodate him if my colleagues feel the same way, but I think that as we question Mr. Weeks further, there may be questions that I don't want the door closed on, that if we need to go back to. So that's, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, Attorney Hazel, did you hear that? Do you have any problems with us going back in case there's a question about the computer down the road which pertains to the process of Mr. Weeks getting his job?
I do.
Does anybody on the, Counselor Seer, could you have a quick question?
I have, oh, I have, Counselor Wood, limited to what we can ask, trying to take away what we filled out, and then, I'm not, I'm not going to dictate to you what questions I can and cannot ask. I think we better just, I know you're a little passionate sometimes, and that may seem like anger to you, maybe to some other people, but it's just the way that I am. So I do want to get to the law on it, and I think we've asked some questions that should be answered by Mr. Weeks here.
Just, again, I'd like to at least respect the wishes of Mr. Hazel and Mr. Weeks and make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Okay, you have a second on that? All favor. Okay.
Okay, if I could, point of order to the chair. I'd like to ask up, Mr. Lamanna, if I could. And I just have a quick question for you. Uh, Mr. Lamanna, in, in the subpoena, could you list what's in there out of the, like, no, before we start talking about this bidding process? Is that in there in part of the subpoena?
In respect to the bid process, item number two, the question line of inquiry, we consider the factual circumstances as to the manner you were awarded a contract of home services for the city of Lynn in your involvement in the bid process.
So at some point, this question's going to be answered. It's in the public subpoena.
There is an ongoing litigation, but if, if the subpoena is not watched at some point, these questions are going to be asked.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody open it up? Any questions on the, any questions? Counselor Seer?
Thank you. We're ready to take the qualifications out. We'll talk about other things other than the computer.
Well, I, I want a representation from the council that the computer issue, you asked all the answers, and that you exhausted all, all the questions that you had on that issue.
Well, I mean, that's, I mean, exhausted. We may come up with some other questions, but either close to tonight or later in the future. So, question to Mr. Weeks.
And, and we're not going to get to the second issue until I know.
Yeah, well, hey, excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Hazel. You don't control this. This is, uh, this is the city council. I think they have the right to ask any questions while we're there. And I think that you, you can either answer them, or you complete the fifth, or whatever you guys choose to do. But this is on, you were right in, you came, and I think that you guys need to sit here and answer the questions, or, you know, whatever you choose to do. But I think you should just at least sit and listen. If you choose to answer them, not answer them, you can. Thank you.
Okay.
Counselor Seer?
Let, let me respond.
I think I have a floor.
Mr. Hazel, please let Counselor Seer finish his question.
Exactly. Okay, with all due respect, then, if that's not going to occur, then we threw our voluntary appearance. And as I said, we reserve that right with respect, with respect to...
You're not listening to me, honestly, sir. You're not listening to us because you went to...
You're not listening to me.
Uh, Mr. Hazel, if you're out of order, could you please just let Counselor Seer ask you a question first?
A voluntary appearance has ended.
So you're refusing to answer the questions of the city council? Are you trying to hide anything? Police said you would come in voluntarily.
Any other comments on that issue before we move to the next item on the agenda? Excuse me, Counsel Lozey?
Uh, just, you asked if we had any comments. I think that was a, an informative session that unfortunately I don't think was all that transparent. Um, there were many questions that weren't answered. Um, I'm disappointed, as I think most of my colleagues here tonight are. And I hope that sometime in the near future, the truth will come out, and we'll go to the bottom of what happened and exactly why it happened. Thank you.
Counsel Barton?
Mr. President, the only thing I feel bad for, I have that Terry Young had to go through what she had to go through.
Thank you, Counsel Barton. Counsel Ford?
At some point, I'm not sure if we need the city attorney status, but we will ask the mayor, why she asked us for weeks to go up and, and take the computer.
Attorney Lamanna?
She may be able to give a, a clearer explanation than what we see tonight. So here is under the mayor's orders, is there anyone in the mayor could come up at some point and explain to us that I requested?
Section 36, City of Lynn City Charter allows the city council to request the mayor to appear at the council hearing. Answer question. One additional requirement, forward above five days' orders, is that you must provide the mayor to answer the hearing. She can, uh, hear here and answer the question. The city council doesn't have that right.
I can trust in doing that, Mr. President, but...
Any other comments? Counsel Cahill?
Thank you, Mr. President. Three new members. The other day, let's just hope that a few folks partly make some apologies and will follow. I hope, I hope someone apologizes. I think somebody deserves it.
Counsel Seer?
Uh, thank you. I wish it was answered. Just to have a couple of apologies, maybe that'd be the end of it. But other questions have arisen because we've been looking, looking at this and trying to come up with answers. And, um, like, Mr. Weeks showed up tonight with a attorney, not answering all our questions, the front limit, but we could ask. Obviously, I mean, it just, it gives a feeling that they're trying to hide something. And, um, it may even be some wrongdoing in the bidding process, which means that laws were broken, and that's possible that, uh, because the mayor's office was involved in it. And it just kind of looks to me as though someone's trying to cover up something or other. And we're trying to get to the bottom of it. And I wish it could be satisfied with just a simple, "I'm sorry, Gary, that we accused you of something. I'm sorry, Council President, that we accused you of something. I'm sorry that we came in, took your computer, looked at whatever information was on it." Uh, I think there's more to it than just a simple apology. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda.
Um, Committee of Records, Ways and Means Committee, there's one issue. Recommends that the Lynn City Council be requested to set down a public hearing relative to a burnt, dilapidated, or dangerous building or other structure located at 30 Holly Avenue. And after hearing, may make record in order a judge against it be a nuisance to the neighborhood, or dangerous, and prescribe it to its disposition, alteration, or regulation. All is authorized by Mass General Laws, Chapter 139, Section 1.
Counsel Lozey?
Mr. President, was the unanimous vote of the Ways and Means Committee a motion to, uh, set down?
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano, absent, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Craig?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Boyd?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Nett?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Vailin?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trinh?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes. Education Committee, there's no action taken?
Motion accepted for Education Committee report. Counsel Seer?
Um, motion to accept. But I also want to say that, um, it's a little disheartening that, um, people didn't show up that were related to that meeting tonight. Um, it looks like there may be a $4.2 million shortfall in the education budget, and no one's really sure where the money's going to be made up. And we were trying to get to the bottom of it. So, um, we really didn't get any of this.
Yeah, it's my understanding, I believe, that there was some type of communication error or notice was sent, but made up and received on the other side. Uh, so, thank you. I'll take that as a motion to accept the report, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Audit Committee, there was no action taken at this time?
Motion to accept the report. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
CBD Advisory Committee, there was a motion to request that the housing authority proceed with the HD zone plan for the city of Lynn.
Counsel Craig?
Mr. President, is you near this court committee? Motion to approve.
Settle.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
License Committee?
The man who voted ready, motion to settle.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And Public Property, there's a motion to place city-owned property of 465 S. Street, Unit 2, outbid.
We have a board of directors.
Motion made, but here, seconded. Uh, discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano, absent, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Craig?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Boyd?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Nett?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Vailin?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trinh?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes. And Finance Committee, several have requested emergencies. I can read them if you want to separate them.
If there's no objection, we'll take those together.
Audit, that the city control of the unit is hereby authorized to take the following actions. Transfer the sum of $2,252.20 from ISD expense to the account of ISD unpaid bills for prior years. Transfer the sum of $8,005, $8,005,000 from the mayor's payroll, I'm sorry, $8,000. $5,000 from the mayor's payroll, $3,000 from the mayor's office expense to the fire department expense. Certify as an available fund, the amount of $5,238,993 zero cents is allotted to the city of Lynn School Department by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for Title I Central, for Title I Central fiscal year 14 grant. Grant period 10/113 to 6/3014. Certify as an available fund, the amount of $56,000 zero cents is allotted to the city of Lynn School Department by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for a SPED 274 program improvement grant. Grant period 10/313 to 8/3114. Certify as available, an available fund, the amount of $2,234,685 zero cents is allotted to the city of Lynn School Department by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for Race to the Truck Grant. Certify as available fund, the amount of $158,260 zero cents is allotted to the city of Lynn School Department by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for Essential to School Health Grant. Grant period 7/113 to 6/3014. Certify as available fund, the amount of $100,341 zero cents is allotted to the Lynn School Department by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for 262 Early Childhood Allocation Grant. Grant period 7/113 to 6/3014. Certify as an available fund, the amount of $581,587 zero cents is allotted to the city of Lynn School Department by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for Quality Full Day Kindergarten Grant. Grant period 7/113 to 6/3014. Certify as an available fund, the amount of $20,000 zero cents is allotted to the city of Lynn School Department by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for Financial Literacy Grant. Grant period 9/2713 to 6/3014. That's it.
That was all the committee.
Counsel Calucci? Take that as a motion to make, approve, and seconded. These are non-competitive return grants. Uh, any discussion? Anybody want to take any individually? Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano, absent, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Craig?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Boyd?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Nett?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Vailin?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trinh?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes.
And on the emergency, roll call placed.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano, absent, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Craig?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Boyd?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Nett?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Vailin?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trinh?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes.
Any new business?
Put the jerk.
Before I entertain that motion, I just want to remind everybody, if you're unaware, that the city council is hosting a Halloween party next Tuesday night in the foyer from 6:00 to 7:00 o'clock. Uh, there'll be ice cream there. Uh, any kids come for free. The cast is going to be showing in the, uh, the auditorium. Uh, any questions, comments, new business? Motion to adjourn. All those in favor?